All right, I'd like to call this meeting in order at 4:00 PM. At 7:00 PM, roll call, please.
Rick and Winkle.
Eric.
Gene Davis.
Here.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Here.
Earl Mullins.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes from the January meetings on the third and the tenth?
Yes.
Is there any changes or revisions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I need a motion to approve, but the ladies all second.
Roll call.
Earl Mullins.
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Yes.
Gene Davis. Yes. Rick and Winkle.
Yes.
Is there any questions on the warrants and payroll timesheets? If not, I need a motion to approve.
Salute.
Second.
Roll call. That was our...
Rick and Winkle.
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Yes.
Earl Mullins.
Yes.
Gene Davis.
I need a motion to approve the police transfer of revenue from general fund to the police fund of $496, is that right?
Mm-hmm. What was it?
$496. Salute.
Second.
Roll call.
Mary Jane.
Yes.
Gene Davis. Yes. Rick and Winkle.
Yes.
Earl Mullins.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the police fund, monthly transfer of $7,100.
Salute.
Second.
Roll call.
Earl Mullins.
Yes.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Yes.
Gene Davis. Yes. Rick and Winkle.
Yes.
I need a motion to approve the January interest transfers, if you would, please.
Salute. Second.
Roll call.
Mary Jane Thomas.
Yes.
Rick and Winkle.
Yes.
Gene Davis.
Yes.
Earl Mullins.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is our new economic development director, Ms. Shonda Colman. Shonda, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, given the cards, we're going to be particularly...
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. See, I'm here because, okay, so I can talk to everyone and turn about that plan.
She's got her phone.
First of all, thanks for having me, and I've gotten to meet a few of you before I had lunch tonight, so, and have been able to take a tour of New Paris for, with multiple people from the New Paris area to House of, David, you came to a nice tour of the community about two weeks ago. So, I'm not sure if you're familiar with anything that we've done so far since I've been here since October, but Preble County has officially made itself on that in regards to economic practices. We've developed a website and created materials on there regarding all the communities in the county, livability, quality of life, available land, available buildings, a multitude of things. I hope you at least have to look at it a little bit since it launched. So far, it has reached, I believe, it was 182 different cities and towns globally. Last month, we reached over 18,000 visitors on our website. What's great about that website is it's targeted marketing. It's to people who are looking at communities for either livability practices or criminal investment opportunities. And Preble County has a lot to offer, and a lot of folks that I've come into contact with through my time here, the one compliment I've said is it's time. It's about time. Preble County deserves it, and we just need to get information out there. We're not necessarily what we're going for, which is rural hog farming. There's a lot more to offer. So, we've done a really good job, both with the commissioners and the development partnership and the Chamber of Commerce in Preble County, in the Preble County Chamber of Commerce, they reacced that, in developing the partnership and trying to pull the amenities together to get that website and other marketing materials online. Now, with that being said, it was key for us to get the website up and running as well as develop our strategy in regards to marketing the county within the region, the Dayton and Cincinnati regions, to show where we were in relationship to a natural infrastructure, 75, 70, you probably know what we're going here. So, we've done that. We've got ourselves on the map. And I've been trying to work about all the communities in Preble County. I am from Preble County. I've been here for nearly 37 years now, so I have a grasp on it, but I haven't... Haven't even met him yet.
Car stop had to go down.
Shonda Colman of Preble County Economic Development.
Hi.
Anyway, we've established ourselves, and we put that, we've got that on autopilot now. We've got a good, strong presence in the economic development field, both with our regional partners and the state and national partners that are in the economic development world. And I, like I said, I've been in Preble County nearly all my life, but I haven't, unfortunately, spent any time in New Paris. A few months ago, a personal staff brought me up here and showed me around a little bit and heard about today's harvest. What a great little place. That is really a great niche. And I feel bad because I've been taking my family to Trenton. And here, this was in my backyard. So, little things like that, I'm trying to incorporate into my daily practices to get the word out until we can get the tours, like a part of our program, up and running. And until then, now that things are going on autopilot, we've got contact information out there. We've established where we are in the region. We've established the fact that we have leadership involved in economic development, currently commissioners down to partnership to the local level. And while that's on autopilot, now we're beginning to form relationships with the New Parises and the Loupsburgs and the different areas in the county to determine what your needs are, what your challenges are, what your strengths are. What are you looking at in terms of development? What are you looking at in terms of sustainability of your businesses that you currently have, the housing stock that you currently have, the family, how do we sustain that and make it better? And being here, meetings like this give me the opportunity to get a, we're here to tell you what we're doing and what we hope to do with getting to know each other's communities. So, take a look at the website, look that over and kind of get an idea of our strategy. We compare a lot of different things. One, for example, obviously, location, but we do a lot of housing cost comparison, shows the affordability of homes in Preble County, and that they range, I think we're 34 percent below the national level in regards to housing prices. And you can compare a home in Preble County for $140,000. On the West Coast, that's not even half of a closet. So, what we're trying to do is show the difference and why someone would choose to live in Southwest Ohio as well as promote the existing employers that we have to show the strength. Your kids can go to college in Ohio and stay here and get a really good job. So, with that being said, that's a whole lot. My door is open. My phone number information is on the business card there. Call me anytime, stop in anytime. I'd like to talk to New Paris more about your infrastructure needs and any other areas that you feel that I could be of benefit to. We definitely want to have the impression of all the communities on all of our materials, our website, our marketing materials, as well as maybe in front of people talking. When I talk to people about Preble County, I want to be most educated on each and every community to the same level, including Paris. So, I'll leave all of your questions behind, but if you want to tell me anything that you've seen so far since we've been in practice here since October, and where you think I can jump in and help you right now.
In what ways are you trying to help the existing businesses that are here now?
Okay. Good question. We have some good examples. So far, we have an aggressive retention schedule. I've met with, I believe we're up to 15 companies now, where I've actually got in and did a full-blown retention survey on the companies to determine where they are in many, it's a 10-page survey. I'd be glad to send you a copy of it, too, so that you can see the approach that we take. We ask a multitude of questions that cover the entire industry. We try to target their needs and reverse the skills and employment needs in general, the sustainability of the company, do they plan to expand, do you think they're going to be able to stay the level they're at? We determine all that through those interviews, and then when we come out of it, we have a strong retention team, which is built with, is built up myself, someone from the community, which would be New Paris when we start calling them and companies here in New Paris, somebody from our job center, somebody from the state of Ohio who wants our regional representative that's been established by the new governor. Right now, that hasn't been so. And then also somebody from Miami Valley Courage Technology Center or Saint Clair. What we do is we go with these five people, which is a tool chest to the employer, and say, this is who we are, this is what we can offer. We're not here to ask you for anything. We're here to listen. Tell us who you are, tell us what your needs are, tell us your successes, tell us how we can recruit companies that will help sustain your business in Preble County. Tell us your partners, tell us who you're shipping to, whatever we can do to keep you here and keep you growing. And just some of the things that's come out of some of the meetings, also on the survey I just threw out there, we asked the employer on a local level, do you have any problems or concerns with water, sewer, fire, emergency, those types of things, to determine the local level need. For example, in West Alexandria, we met with a company, and one of the concerns was the outages, the power outages. She says she knows there's something we can do about DP Now and power outages. On our partnership team, I have an endless amount of resources there for me, 24/7, to where I can call these folks and ask for assistance. And one of the partners on the team is Bob Somer from DP Now. I got back from this visit, and I asked Bob, what's going on with this company in West Alexandria? Why are they experiencing outages? And what can we do? So, he determined that the outages were due to automobile accidents, and it really had nothing to do with DP Now in general. So, we made a contact back to the company and let her know that that was the case, and that from this point forward, when there's an outage, he will personally call me or call her to let her know. Some of the other things are developing workforce initiatives. We narrowed it down out of 15 companies that I have met with. I've met with other companies, too, but when I say companies that were doing this full-blown retention, surveys on their primary employers, they're bringing dollars in from the outside. These are the high-paying positions to start with, because we really need to secure them to secure the ancillary projects and employers. The workforce needs really aren't as broad as what people might think. For the most part, everyone I've met with is hiring, and hired more than one or two people. Some are up in the sevens, tens, and fifteens in amount of people who are there looking to hire. Some of them are in the $20 to $25 range. The lowest is $10, and mid-range is about $15, full-time employment, which is really good. I've yet met with an employer here in Preble County that's not hiring. So, what we've been able to do is report that back to our job center and help determine how the job center can supply resumes and services to the employer to help fill those positions. So, we've been real successful. The players that we've met with have given great feedback on the visits. I've been told that, I've been here three months, at this particular time, I've been here three months, but it felt like five years. Some of the companies I've met with said, had you been here five years ago, we want to have this conversation. Just really good feedback, and I've been able to come back to my partnership board and tell them what we're getting out of these surveys, to the commissioners and to our other partners, what we're getting out of these surveys. And in a year's time, what we're going to do is give a full report on all the companies that I've met with. And this gives us the ability to be proactive next year in determining where that company is going. One example is a company that I've worked with in my past role. They were an expanding company, and I identified that early on, this company is busting at the seams, the industry is prying, these guys are going to need to expand with their landlord, what are we going to do? There was an alley behind the facility and abandoned house adjacent to the alley. What we did is we went in and secured some funding, tore down the house, took out the alley, rezoned the lot. When that company was ready to go, we had the land in place. So, those are the things that we'll be doing going forward after, you know, we lay the groundwork, getting the wall rolling. Next, we need to work with communities, with the local folks, to see what your needs are, how we can sustain your companies, how we can keep you whole. And get the word out about Paris, even if it's just about today's harvest or the resort here. It's amazing. I've been there 30 years, and I've seen that a couple months ago. I've been there 10 times with my kids, so hopefully this time I'll be there 10 times with my kids. Also out there, because I could talk to you all day about all the things we're doing and the good success, so, stop me now.
Well, as I told you before, you know, our community is poised for growth. We've got the state-of-the-art water system. We set on a river of water, we're abundant with water. We've upgraded our sewer facilities to take care of any type of growth. Now, we just need to put a certain thing in place, which tonight we was going to do that, but due to some talks with our attorney and advice with them, we've got a couple of things that we need to take care of. So, that should be taken care of within our next meeting. So, you know, we're ready to go, and that's where I'm going to need you. And I'm talking about the 320, four and a quarter. That's what I call it. And there's no reason why we can't go toward that and get that development, go to develop, but maybe with a natural little push, a little bit of infrastructure, just a little bit of help here. We can get this taken care of, and we can look at growth.
We can. And one of the things that I've shared with the folks that have brought me out here and talked to me about New Paris is Indiana has an inventory tax. Ohio does not. My goal is part of the industries that Indiana is going under in regards to, they can get the business component that can survive and flourish in Indiana and just across the border here in Ohio, in areas like this. We can attract the logistics and distribution component, because we don't have an inventory tax here in Ohio.
I'd also like to meet you, this is Ms. Susan Skits, key engineer, and she represents our village. So, she'd be a good person to get a hold of, anything that pertains to New Paris on the engineering field, she can help you.
We've already developed numbers to actually put utilities down to 40. That's a village that was proactive in generating numbers years ago. So, we already know what it's going to take infrastructure-wise to get it there, and like Neil said, you know, we've done what we needed to do with our water and service systems so that they can take on, you know, growth in that area. They're ready to go. It's just a matter of, you know, some health thing you need on economic level.
And that's great, and that proactiveness is what will lead you there, getting in front of the right people. And a lot of times, getting some of that done requires a project on the back end, and requiring some of the funds that go along with it. If you're not out here talking about what you have to offer, if you're not out there showing, you know, the world, and that you have something to offer to new investment, it doesn't matter if you put all the water infrastructure in, you know, in the world, if you're out there telling the people why you should move here, the regional assets that you have that tie into New Paris, because people really don't know where New Paris is in the big picture. Few people know where South West Ohio is in relation to Dayton, Cincinnati. So, we're just trying to establish ourselves in the nation and globally.
That's one of the reasons I like, I've always lived in New Paris since I was two years old, but I like it because it's the rural area. I hate, I don't have patience with the traffic in some big cities, and we're right in the middle. We're not far from Columbus, Ohio. We're not far from Cincinnati, Indianapolis. You can drive either place, you know, within two or three hours, and that's what I like about it.
You said the most important thing about our economic development program. In all competitive arenas, when it comes to economic development, the only thing that you have more for you is what makes you different. Everybody has location.
And we've got...
Everybody has roads. Everybody has this, but everybody doesn't have the quality of life we have here in Preble County and all our little communities, and that's what makes it, and there's some studies out there right now that I hope to share eventually about families who are leaving the urban areas to come to more rural areas, because they can spend more time with their families than they can spend on the interstate. When you look at different, Long Island 75, it can take you 45 minutes to get from Middletown to Westchester, and it takes you another 15 minutes to get off Canyon Center Boulevard. Somebody can leave that direction and be in Preble County in about the same amount of time with less traffic, maybe not Westchester, but other areas of the new region. And it's just so much better for the family. And our approach to preaching amenities and what we have is aligned with what makes us different. And what makes us different is we are a rural county. We are an agricultural county.
And we're not hard to find because 70s right now.
Yeah, but you know what? Honestly, a lot of people don't know that about Preble County.
Well, I know that.
In Butler County, I preached that we had I-75. I-75 clipped to the very corner of Butler County, and a ton of people thought it ran right through the heart of Butler County, because we're, you just are marketing in person, the way our development flows. So, part of our approach is to talk about 40, to talk about I-70. I've talked to people, and said, well, I didn't know it went right through Preble County. It's right through the middle. So, you'll see that on our website, we're trying to establish the infrastructure in regards to transportation and ease of access.
Is this the first place you come to when you leave 70 coming from the west?
Yeah.
It's here.
Well, what's great is, you know, you have the opportunity to highlight the resort, to do the harvest, all the other things that you have also.
To be, everybody loves that to be.
What's that to be? I know. I'm hoping for this week, the snow gets this week, because my kids so on the internet.
Oh, they have their own snow. They have their own snow. The old one thing that bothers me when I'm coming to New Paris off of 70, the sign out there says Lewisburg. Why doesn't it say New Paris?
It's funny, it's probably like Lewisburg says New Paris, because I...
Lewisburg's quite a ways.
Yes, but if you do it at the... It takes you so far up north. It took me an elevator when I first went out there, and I know where Lewisburg is. I've been there a lot.
So, we need, we do need some signs saying New Paris that way.
Just so you know, the partnership has, we've designated different committees to target certain areas of what we're doing. And one of them is a marketing committee, and I serve one of those, all of these committees. But my, I can tell you that a consultant will determine where they're going, if they're going to locate a committee in the first five minutes of being in your town. And what they judge that by is the signage coming in, are your stakeholders there? Do you have a sign that tells, you have Rotary, that you have the schools, you know, who are your stakeholders? And going through Preble County, some of the research I've been trying to do is determine who has the best signs and going in and going out. And a lot of these stakeholder signs, there's trees growing over them, they're hanging over, and so our marketing committee is trying to draw up some information on how we can go about creating better signage fluidly throughout the county. So, you know you're in Preble County. On 70 alone, you don't really know you crossed into Preble County, but you know work bill's there. You know when you leave Preble County, you just don't know you're in it. So, what we're trying to do is to take, signage is on the top list of things that we want to do here.
It's something, that very big sign on 70 says, "Wards."
Yes. But there are a lot of things that, you know, I know that you guys are going through, and again, we were working on getting some things on autopilot so that we can just start nailing down some things that need to get done and putting some other things in place that take more administrative time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any questions for Shonda?
No, I'll have to call you. I have some more ideas.
The website is preblecountyregion.com. Make sure you look at it, and some people say, why you say Preble County Region? Because people out on the West Coast don't know where Preble County is. They know where New Paris is. So, we're playing on the picture that we're right there in between, which by the end of this year will be the 15th largest in the state of the country. The worst will be once the state will write a bill. So, visit the website, my phone number's on there, at 119 South Barrett Street, across from the courthouse, and then return.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Russell, would you like to address the council?
Well, I just came to support Shonda, but really, she is a resource for you guys, for the whole county to use. And when Shonda asked for me to bring her up here and show her around, I did take her to all the businesses, I believe, in New Paris, including up to the industrial park where Jerry Weichl and Paul Hemper. I took her especially out to Route 40, and from what you guys have told me in the past of what you would like to see New Paris do out there, I did relay that to Shonda. In fact, I think sometime here soon, we're going to be calling the Gomar, who owns the old State Line Truck Stop, because I have kept in contact with them over the years, and we've looked at the truck wash, and I know Shonda's talked to some other businesses out there that see development in the future. And so, yeah, I'm very glad that we have Shonda on board. She hit the ground running, got the website up, now she's getting out and making, obviously, the contacts she needs to, so I view her as a resource, and I know she'll be back, so we're glad to have her.
Yeah, because there's some things I want to talk to her about later on anyway, and see if she can, on the side, get the ball rolling. Like I say, there's a couple things that we need to put in place, and we're going to do that. So, and after that, we're ready to go. You know, I want to form the jab and go from there. That's my goal. You know, I want to be able to take care of our community. I want to be a suburb of Richmond, Indiana. I like it the way it is. I grew up in this town, and just as you did and everybody here, growing up, when we were kids, you didn't have to leave this town for anything. Everything was here. Times have changed, but I would still like to keep that comfortable feeling that you don't have to lock your door when you walk out, that you'll be able to...
I don't think that would...
That you'll be able to bring your children in a good place and not have to worry about them being, you know, but yet have some business and infrastructure to keep the community surviving into the future. That's my goal. So, Shonda, if you can do to help us, Dave, we thank you for everything that you've done, and we appreciate any hope that you can do for us in the future.
Absolutely.
You know, is it everybody's in?
I promised I was going to take my wife out to dinner.
Well, not dinner, but...
You're running with my... On the sake of the rest of the nation, I want to say that maybe even out here is wonderful. It's been quite a few years since I've been out here on council meetings. This is tremendous when I walked in, so, real...
You don't come in and take a tour, take a look around, and you don't go to the police department next door, and it's done quite well.
Yes, you guys have done well, so, sorry.
All right, Shonda. I'll see you. Thank you, David.
Thanks, David. See you.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Welcome anytime.
See you, Susan. Yeah, we'll see you.
We're going to talk about that, so if you walk out the door.
We'll see you. All right, Susan, the floor is yours.
All right. I'm sorry, I was a little late. I had a couple of stuff that came up. I listened to the team. One thing we're talking about this evening does have to do with CDPG. The original first public hearing was supposed to have been last Wednesday on the 2nd. It's been rescheduled, but I don't know what the date actually is. It's not a public hearing that we have to be at, obviously. The applications this year are due on Friday, April the 1st, so we have about this meeting and one more meeting, your meeting in April will be on the 4th, so we'll have to have it in before then. The second public hearing is on May the 2nd at 2:00, which is a Wednesday, or I'm sorry, May the 4th at 2:00, which is a Wednesday, and that will be the date when we would put forth, you know, any comments or any presentations. Last year, for the Formula Program, we submitted East Main Street Phase 1. And so, what I brought this evening was just a copy of what the project was, what the cost was, what we were asking for rate-dollar wise, what your match was. Also, this year, the county is eligible for neighborhood revitalization dollars. Remember, last year, they were kind of grass, we've gotten new the year before. So, they are eligible for that this year. In 2009, we submitted the Shady Wayne Project, if you remember. So, I'm going to kind of give you this paper, too, and then we can kind of talk about them. It's kind of the same format as what you got there in front of you for East Main Street. So, I guess at this point, we kind of need to start thinking about, you know, whether you want to suggest East Main Street again, whether you want to do something else, or is there something that's become more of a priority than East Main Street?
Well, we talked about Cherry Street, we talked about Main Street. Main Street is terrible, plus it handles a lot of business there, and there's a lot of businesses on Main Street. I think that's, you know, we need to stay in, we ought to start at the other end if you want to have a street.
Well, we started at the east end. I always wondered if we need to start from the west and maybe go backwards, just because, you know, you don't really have any businesses down there. The church is down there, a few houses. I mean, we can always, you know, flip-flop it, so to speak, and go from, you know, Main Street, Washington Street East and go down to that first street.
I know, when I first came on, we had to set up our original 10-year plan.
Right. Right. I mean, so I said
That's in the scope of doing, you know, that way, but maybe it would be a better if we came from the other direction. Since that would include the businesses that are there.
Well, that too, and if we decide to do something with the neighborhood revitalization, we've got the last phase of our downtown project getting ready to go. I mean, that money will be available on July 1st to do the end down by the, down to the American region and then the end down to the Frederico. So that would kind of tie into that same downtown, you know,
Right.
focus that we've been trying to achieve.
Now, wasn't we talking about putting the Cherry Street on a different grant?
Yeah, Cherry Street, while Cherry Street can be CDPG, the problem is you're not going to have the ABT down there in order to try and do public works with it. And that's why we were kind of doing, no, wait a minute. I think, pardon, yeah, Cherry Street is on public, I'm sorry, I'm confused. No, Cherry Street is on public works because we can make a 320. And it's 121. We put in for the first phase of Cherry Street, which would be 2014, which would go from Washington Street down to about where the railroad came through. And that included all the drainage that we were going to need to do and then part of the curb gutter sidewalk. So we couldn't really get all the way down there and still try to stay in that, you know, financial $250,000 or less on the grant money. So that first phase is already, it was submitted last year. So this year will just be, we can just resubmit the same exact thing. There's no real reason to change it. And then the following year for 2013, it would be, we would have, we could tweak it however you want to, in order to be able to submit funding consideration to that. But yeah, Cherry, I'm sorry, Cherry Street, we're kind of working on public works on that one. I know we talked about Cardinal Hill in the past and it's not really public works.
I'd like to see that finished out, you know, from where we stopped on up to the, into town.
Oh, I know.
And definitely need to be done.
Well, I think we did some numbers on Cardinal Hill, if I remember, that really needed to redo some base work down there. So it's going to be a sizable project just because of that. So I guess it's really a matter, you know, and you don't have to decide this tonight, obviously, because we will have a meeting in March. But at that point, you'll need to be passing some reservations. So I guess really the decisions are, you know, one, do we want to submit for formula? And two, you know, what would that be? Do we want to try to come back to Washington Street and do from Washington Street, you know, east, you know, that first block?
To me, that would make more sense.
I can relate to that, thinking about downtowns.
Yeah, everybody. Because like you're saying, the dinner all ties in, they're going from there up. That would take care of those businesses, you know, the antique shop, Bud Reed's Garage, you know, the apartments there and all that, right? And Earl's
Well, I mean, the antique shop added a lot to your community.
Yes, it did. Absolutely.
Coming through town at night and they've got all those lights in all the windows. It's really attractive. You know, Bud Reed's always been a great business for New Paris and I know they've done things for the village and, you know, they've been a very steadfast business in town for a long time.
And the street and sidewalk towns are all bad. I mean, there's no doubt about that. But that, we could get that first block that you care about. That would be a heck of a shot. And I think that, like you're saying, it would all tie into our other projects. That would be great.
Okay. I mean, if that's what the council wants to do, I can let them
What's everybody else thinking?
I agree.
Are you thinking, Joe, Jeannie? Would you rather start there than at the other end of Main Street? Start with the businesses at and come back this way and take care of that sidewalk, curb streets there? To me, I think that'd be the best way to go.
I think it would be a wise move, just simply because I think you're going to have more impact for the businesses than just replacing some residential sidewalk. And, you know, it's a better sell for me to the commissioners when I got to stand up there and talk about and try to tell why your project's better than another if we're just replacing residential sidewalks and curb and gutter. I mean, there's only so much to sell there. You know what I'm saying? You know, I do the best I can, but when you're up against helping businesses and we've got this new economic development person on board, you know, which maybe hopefully will make economic development a bigger focus in Preble County.
What the commissioner's talking about in meetings that I've listened to her talk to, you know, working with Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission and all, it sounds good, it's big. It's a good shot.
I think it is.
You know, I know John Marvill, when he was here and Powell Yoder, they tried hard, you know, but, and they seemed to be going in the right direction. But they hit that stone wall and then it just kind of went boom, you know. So hopefully she'll have more, more
Experience.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. It can get things happening for us, so. But I think that'd be the way to go. I think that'd be the smartest move to tie in with our other projects.
That's fine. That's fine. We can put the numbers together and I can come back for you at your next meeting. That's no problem.
Does everybody agree?
Yes.
I'd like to hear from you guys.
I've asked you twice. I know.
Make a motion that we submit Main Street from Washington West to the first block for a formula project.
Is there a second?
Or east?
No, I said west.
It's east, yeah.
Joe seconded motion, starting at the west, going to the east. Roll call, Jamie.
Who seconded?
Joe.
Oh, okay.
Tom?
Yes.
Rick and Rick? Jean Davie? Yes, Joe Bartle?
Yes.
You're Jean Davie.
Yes.
Okay, then the neighborhood revitalization, we're all pretty familiar with that particular program. As you know, $300,000 of that money's come to New Paris three times now, so we've gotten almost a million dollars out of that program. The county can apply every other year for that money if they're funded. They were funded through a project in Graddes two years ago in 2009. So that makes them eligible in 2011 to apply again. So those applications also will be accepted on April 1st. And then if there's any comments or presentations, those also will accrue on May the 4th. When we submitted in 2009, we submitted the Shady Lane project. And what I did for you there is I left the project the way it was and how we submitted it the first time. And then the numbers and handwriting are just simply some changes that have occurred because the Washington Phase Three project has become a little bigger project because we added that water and work on Hutton Street, but
Well, now wait a minute. We can take that out.
Well, we can. But the money is still all there.
That's right.
We're gonna have to figure that one out when we get to a larger project to exclude that.
I got it.
Okay, and then the East Main Street project, if we stayed with that, which obviously we're not going to, there was a little different match structure there. And so what I was trying to show you was that the first time we went in with a $590,000 package and that included a $1,000 donation from the chamber towards park playground equipment. You know, at this point, we'd be at 716, too. So we'd obviously have a sizable, bigger project. And a lot of that to do to what we did with the Washington Street project. And since that money will be, we should have a letter the first of March stating that, you know, congratulations you've been awarded. So obviously, we may have the documentation that we would need to show that we have a match. So I guess, you know, that's really up to you whether you want to move forward with an application. Do you want to stay with the Shady Lane? Do you want to do something else? The other big qualifier there is you have to have 60% low to moderate income.
Which benefit?
No, you don't.
There?
Well
On Shady?
We would have to do a survey.
For those who expire, right?
And the one that we did back in 2005 was good for five years, so in 2010, it basically went away. I had a conversation with Lori Libby today, if you remember, from Miami University, and about whether or not they could do a survey for the community for New Paris. And they don't have the subsidy from the state anymore, so they can't do it for free. And so therefore, we cost something. The thing that I think we need to think about is whether they're going to allow us to do the whole community. And if you remember, that was kind of the push from Ken Keller because if we did the whole community and used the park component that we used, we were able to count everybody as a beneficiary instead of just the people on Shady Lane and the people on Main Street. We could count everybody. So at the end of my conversation with Lori Libby, I decided to call Ken Keller to talk to her about it a little bit, just to try and see what I could push her on. Because maybe the county really needs to step up and help the village or the village needs to do the income survey and the county needs to certify it for you. Because Miami University's kind of like not all excited about doing it.
Well, you know, like we did before, we broke up in groups and took streets and now we went hand to hand.
Right. So I tried to call and talk to Ken Keller and she wasn't there today. So that's something that we're probably going to have to make a decision on. Because to even qualify, we're either going to have to just do the target areas only and do it that way, which means we could still need the 60% or more low to moderate income, but we may not have the number of beneficiaries because we wouldn't be using the whole community. So I guess that's kind of something that we're going to have to decide whether, if you want to move forward with a revitalization application, you know, do we want to try to look at doing an overall income survey so that we can, that use everybody's beneficiaries and throw a park component in there? Or do we want to just try to target the areas of, you know, Main Street, Shady Lane, wherever you choose, and just do those people and go that route, but have less
And this survey has to be done by the first of April?
Well, I think it'd have to be done by May the 4th for sure. Because usually, you know, when you, even when you go in there on May the 4th, there's been times people don't have their survey done. You know, so obviously, they didn't have it done when they submitted their application. You know, and I think Earl and Rick have both been there where there's been, oh, yeah, yeah, we haven't done this week or whatever. I mean, I would want to have it in their hands before that day. But, you know, would we have most of April maybe to work on it? Yes, I think so.
And what do we need for Cherry and going west?
We don't need anything.
Don't need anything there?
That's public works and they don't go, their LMI doesn't need anything to them.
How long are those good for now? Three years?
Five.
Five years?
It would take us back, we're in the
It would take three years, huh?
Right. The next census of low to moderate income numbers probably won't come out till 2012. But once it does, any surveys that have been done are gone. You know, basically cuts them all off. And it's, you know, whatever the number is at 2000, you know, when that's released in, say, 2012, then that's what it is unless you do another survey after that. So, you know, technically, we're probably only going to be able to get a year or two of these numbers.
So, and the only project that it really affects is the Shady Lane project and what we're talking about, so.
Unless you want to do something else with the $300,000. I mean, you wouldn't have to do the Shady Lane project. We could do something, a different project with it. You know, it's just a matter of if you want to apply at all for revitalization dollars, no matter what project you do, we're going to have to use 60% LMI goal.
If you do it community-wide, then you have more flexibility to switch that project around?
A little bit, but whatever project we would decide to do, once you apply for that, you can't change your scope. You have to stay with that. And the idea of doing the whole community was, you know, throw in a park component in there for a couple thousand dollars and then we got to use everybody. You know, instead of having, you know, 100 people benefiting, we've got 900 people benefiting. And that was kind of, you know, and part of the scoring has to do with how many people are going to benefit in your project. And this is a state competitive project. So like Preble County will send their application to Columbus and then your application will be scored with all the other applications in the state. So it's a little different than formula because the formula money is just all locally controlled. You know, the commissioners pretty much control it. But that money's actually competitive at the state level. So that's why
So it sounds like we need to do a community-wide survey.
Well, that's your, I mean, I guess that's really up to you. I mean, obviously, I think we've got good numbers as far as leverage is concerned because I think we can probably pull most of the points for that. And it really just depends on who you're applying. You know, every year it's different. You know, the other, the other component that we need to work on if you want to move forward is citizen participation. You know, that was one year, remember, we just kind of did some minimum public hearings and that really wasn't enough. There was a survey thing. We kind of, you know, and I've got the surveys that we did before. And I think we can reuse that, that survey in this particular instance because it's not that old. But I think we are going to have to do some, you know, public hearing of some kind, you know, some type of advertising. We used the New Paris News before, kind of passed it out, if you remember. These were the surveys that we did. I mean, there's that citizen participation down there. As far as the income surveys, I really think if you want to try to do it on a local level, the first thing I would suggest is let's just do a mailing. Do a mass mailing of it to everybody in the community because you're going to pay, you know, you paid the postage to Miami University when you did it anyway. And then collect it and, you know, really try to sell it to people and then hopefully maybe just do a minimum of, you know, door to door. You know, we have to have 300, 300 completed surveys is kind of your threshold number. You know, I mean, if you think you want to do that, I think that's something, you know, doing a mailing is fairly
It just seems like we don't have a very good responsible mailing.
No, we don't. I bet we do it door to door.
Well, I think what we did the one last year, when we did that one in 2008 that never got finished, we were short 77 surveys, I believe. But if you want to do the order, I mean, I did a door to door in New Paris. And, you know, I think we did it, we did it on Saturday morning and then we came back and it's, you know, like two or three evenings. And, I mean, it's, it's a feasible way to do it. It's really whatever you guys want to do. But, you know, those are two things that we're going to have to, you know, if we want to move forward with a revitalization application, those are two things we're going to have to really put some effort towards, you know, in February and March to see what happens. And I think that you would be great to try to take on this income survey and just kind of, you know, get some help and if you want to just kind of
I was thinking high school.
There you go. You know, I think you would be great at just taking it over and, you know, kind of controlling it and being the force behind it and get some people to help you and I'll help anyway.
The honorary classes, I think they have to have some public input or some credits or whatever. That would be great for them.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to do something like that, I mean, I can get you the, you know, all the numbers and the forms and the whatever you need. I mean, that's
I'll do it and I'll get it done.
Yeah, but if you go do it on a couple
I mean, if that's okay with Cal. I'm sorry.
I don't have a problem because we need to get it done. Rick?
Half if you want.
The town survey is fine, but seeing how we don't have another project picked out other than Shady Lane at this particular moment. My question is, would we not be better off, if this is the project we're submitting, because we don't have anything on the table right here tonight, if we would not be better off concentrating on that area in your survey?
Well, you just do that one area.
And do that one. I mean, we could do it a survey, but we really don't have another project out there at the moment unless somebody could come up with one here in the next 10 minutes. I'm just saying, would our time not be better off and our effort better off spent in the area that we're trying to get?
You might have a higher low to moderate income number because you're not trying to mesh it with everybody else. And maybe that higher low to moderate income number, if it's there, if, you know, if it's there. And I don't know that. I guess the people that live in that area have to tell me. But if you feel like the low to moderate income number might be higher by just, you know, localizing it to that particular benefit area, then maybe that would offset some points that you might
My thought process would be to survey that area by the next meeting. And if the numbers are not there, then you have another one to do the city survey.
That'd be fine.
Would be my thought process.
That sounds like a good idea.
Because we really don't have another project down here. And to let Shonda know that what the Phase Three of what we've been doing for the last several years in town, as you come through New Paris, we've done the whole main drag except for the two ends. And we have been successful, thanks to Susan, of getting this. And our next project will be to finish the whole throwaway through town. Because we feel like, you know, the first appearance is always the most important. And so we'll have the main throwaway done. And unfortunately, we don't have anything on the table to go in her direction for economic development right now. And this is the project we've been talking about. So my thought process is, you know, shoot for this and if that don't work, then we can do the town survey at that point. It gives you another month. You can come up with something more substantial. I mean, Shady Lane definitely needs attention.
No, even if there's no lobby on that project, it still helps us with the competition if we get
Well, you're in the middle.
More people, right? Beneficial.
Well, the more people does, but I guess also sometimes when you put more people in the mix, sometimes that brings your low to moderate income level down. So let's say when we did the whole community, we were at 68%. You know, okay, you get points for being at 68% and you get points for having this many beneficiaries. Okay, well, let's say that by narrowing down our target area, now we're at 75%. So we get the points up here, but maybe we don't get as many points for the beneficiaries and they kind of wash each other out. And I think that's kind of what Rick was alluding to, was if we can go out there and get higher LMI numbers by localizing the area, it may offset the fact that we don't have as many beneficiaries.
Because I got to tell you, we've been very fortunate and they made point in the last meeting to let us know how very fortunate we've been. So we're really going to have to score extremely high. I can Well, nobody said that. The rock is on the wall, folks, so, you know.
Well, the other thing I think too is, you know, is I think it's going to be one of those things, if anybody else from the county puts an application in, even if yours is better than theirs,
We won't get
I don't think they'll probably give you the nod because you've already gotten the money three times. But if you remember, right, one of the, I think the second time we put our application in, we did it just because we did. And nobody else went in. And it went to the state and we got funded and we were all going, we can't believe that this even happened. But it was just a matter of being in the right place at the right time. And you took advantage of the opportunity and it paid you back, you know, in multiple ways, but you never know.
I'm sure we're not the only ones right now struggling for match money. I'm sure there's other places too, which one's going to narrow down the candidates to apply for this, I'm sure.
I don't know, the projects that you have on your survey back in 2009 were the Holly Mills on the east end, Shady Lane, Cardinal Hill, Main Street from Washington to Spring. to Spring, which was that same area. Water and Sewer Extension along New Paris Geddesburg, Water and Sewer State Route 40, Lincoln Lane improvements from Run to the Dead End, the Engle addition, uh, Spring Street improvement north of Walnut to the golf course, which we've already done that, and then Walnut Street improvements from Whitewater Avenue East. So, those were kind of the things that we threw out there, um, before. Obviously, like Rick said, we really don't have numbers on any of those. We left Cherry Street off, if you remember, because we felt like it was more targeted towards public works. Um, so, but, I mean, I think if you want to try that first and see where the numbers are, I think that's a good idea. My view must work, and mine, you know, paying off just as well.
You know, I can think right now of dozen houses out of the 45 there that are all fixed income and retired.
There you go.
You know, when it being right off the get-go.
Right, right.
So...
Okay. Most of the New Paris is on a fixed income.
Not, not, not as much as you can.
Well, even with the welfare apartments?
No. That doesn't. But, anyway.
Okay. Well, I guess then, you, um, do you want to give Mary Jane the...
Not do.
Yeah, and I can get her information.
If you want to do Mary Jane, you know, get the...
Okay.
And I'll kind of help you with the area because you can kind of show, yeah, a map that we can kind of help out with the area, all the beneficiaries, and I want to talk to Kim Feller and see if we really have to do the areas. I mean, there's no howlies. There's some down there on that end of Washington Street, but there really isn't too many down here, whether we need to include those, or because there are public works if we can just kind of keep it up there. So, um, but I'll talk to her, and we'll, we'll define what, what area we need and try to localize it to get the best number.
Yeah, and give me a date that you have to have.
Okay. Well, their next meeting is March the 7th, so I would say by, you know, somewhere like by the 25th of February, you know, or even the 2nd of March or so, somewhere in there. So, we've got a couple days to get the numbers together, you know, so that we can be in a position on the 7th to come back and 5th.
I don't want to wait until last minute, if that matters to you.
Well, she's supposed to be back in office tomorrow, so I will talk to her tomorrow, and then if you give me your phone number, I will call you.
Okay.
And then we can, you know, get, to get the paperwork together and the map, and then you can have three weeks to work on.
Okay.
Other...
Yeah.
Wait until some snow melt. I'm going to get time, everybody's home. So, okay, any other questions about that? I mean, I was still looking at Shady Lane, is that what we're still thinking about?
Yeah, I'd say so. We don't have anything else on the table, just take our time, and this is the one we've already been talking about, so we might as well do the shot, see what we have. We put this all, that's the problem of the week.
Well, I think if that area, you know, if we can target that area, we feel like we can get a pretty good low to moderate income number up there, you know, then that's probably a good thing anyway, because that project's going to be expensive enough to try and do anything up there is going to take a sizable amount of money. It's not just something you can do in pieces apart. You know, it's just, it's just one of those projects, so...
You know, because the original trains up there, they, they collapsed, and they fell over top of them, and now it's washing out, washing the road out from underneath, well, and all up there.
There's just enough problems up there that you're going to have to do a lot of work all at one time to make it work.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
All right.
All right, well, I will get, you want to, like, give me your phone number, you write it down for us? Okay, cool. And then I'll get you some numbers on, uh, Main Street from east.
Don't forget to dig...
Yeah.
Dig underground coal stuff that's underneath them sidewalks on the first house, three building, my brother...
You're on both sides or just your side?
They're on both sides.
Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Coal shoots. Coal ashes, hidden cavities under them sidewalks.
Okay. I'm glad you did. I knew there was on his side, and then there was on Andy's side. Okay, I will make sure we look at it. But then, did we run into some coal shoots?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, but it's nothing compared to what you're about to run into. You need to go down there and look and see what's down.
So, I know, I did, I did some coal shoots on a downtown project we did over in Indiana that looked pretty good.
No, we ran it the last time.
I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, it's fieldwork stuff, but there's going to be quite a bit of expense there. Take, it's, uh...
All right, I think that's it. Unless you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Well, um, I'll get with you. We'll be back on March the 7th, and then we can kind of decide where to go. What do you want to do about citizen participation slash public hearing?
Well, search your points, Ellen.
We're going to have to do something, because if you remember the one year, we kind of, that's where we kind of got dumped. Um, I think what we could do is if we want to try to advertise for a public hearing at your next council meeting, then we can combine it with your meeting. I can get an, I can get Jane. Maybe we, I don't know if there's, we can post some things around town. Maybe we can get, I'll try to put the information together, and when you go door-to-door, you can pass out a flyer to those people. We could at least have a hundred people that, you know, we did, you know, I don't know the New Paris News. Do they, they don't...
They have the press.
Okay. Does it still, do they still...
Yes.
And does it have, can it be in at a certain time? You know, when the headlines are?
No.
I think they just...
It's got to be in the 25th.
Okay, then when does it go out?
He has it by the first of the month.
So, if we put it out the first of March, we could put something in there about the public hearing we're having on the 7th, because I got some information. Who do I have to contact?
Joe Pepperstapp.
Okay. Can I call you tomorrow and get that information?
Yes.
Okay, why don't we do that, and then, um, we can put something in there, and we'll just try to have a public hearing on the 7th, so we can talk about where we're out with the LMI. Um, I think we can still, we can talk, I want to bring the survey back in today and say, hey, we did the survey back in 2009, these were kind of the results, what do you guys think about it? To try to, you know, generate some discussion, and then maybe kind of, just kind of build off of that.
Okay, that's fine.
You know, and that way it doesn't become a whole other one meeting. Do you want to just do that sudden there, or do you, do you want to do it at a different time?
No, I'd say do it like 6:30, 6:30.
That's what I was thinking.
Then we're ready to council, and that's what we did last time.
Okay, then we'll just do it at 6:30 on the, on the 7th.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Then we're ready to meet this afternoon.
All right. Can Jane just replace that?
Jane?
Jane is the replacement.
She is the replacement. We made it so she can live what she wants.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
She came back, we can't get her cover.
There you go.
She's on a bad, bad finish. Why like her isn't that...
There you go. Next on the agenda is the income tax. All, all I wanted to do was have that ready to go tonight, Dr. Rick spoke with our attorney, there's a couple of things that he definitely needs to go over on our, on the ordinance, and he wants us to kind of form a committee so that we can put our heads together and get this straightened out. What I wanted to do is I was going to have myself, Rick, since he's the head of finance, Earl, since he's president of council, and Jane, since he's our fiscal officer, be that committee to meet with Mr. Amick so we can get this taken care of. For all the reason everything is in order 100% when we bring it to vote on at our next meeting.
I thought they, do they not have copies of ordinances from, like, Westell?
Well, that's what we do. That's what we're going to do. There's things in there that we need that...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I didn't know you had that.
That needs to be looked at closer, and he wants to take care of that. So, I, myself, I want to make doggone sure everything is perfect, everything is right, it is the way we need it to be, and then we'll move ahead. Okay?
That's fine.
Okay, all right. Next in is committee reports. Safety, chief?
Please, by the handle, 67, all.
Excellent.
For service in January, 51 reports made two arrests, issued six citations, twelve warnings, and four vehicles were encountered. Um, everything's down a little bit due to the cold weather and all that, so, um, we're kind of concentrating a little bit on some area drug activity that's going on, so, um, they're residents and stuff like that, and they are aware that we're there and making them very unhappy, so, um, we've zoomed out their attention, so. Uh, the only other thing I have on there is, uh, the semi-high level park that was spraying in Maine, I went up and talked about it, and then ultimately sent my letter, and he did, you know, we did some measurements and stuff, and looked at some maps, and found out that he was parking in the right of way, so that was our leverage, he didn't move it. So, we were real happy about it at first, but, uh, he's got a relative that was right outside of town, said he didn't park it out there, so, um, so he did round and, you know, understood why we were complaining, you know, because I told him, we're aware of it, we have to do something about it, so, so he did, he just moved it outside of town, so, um, you may see it there once in a while.
For all I might...
He asked me, he said, you know, once, when I'm getting ready to leave, do you care if I pull it up there so I can load my stuff? And, you know, so I told him, as long as it's under an hour or something like that, there wouldn't have a problem with that, so. And I haven't seen it, I haven't seen him back there since I walked there, so.
Well, thank you for that, because I use that street up all the time.
Sure.
I have a question, Chris. Who captured the escaped prisoner, or how did they capture him?
Um, that was the sheriff's office, and, uh, they tracked him by his cell phone where he escaped from. So, uh, they just sent a couple flight clothes guys in there and sat down right beside him. Once the movie, they were always, hey! So, uh, so it was kind of a short and sweet thing, and he knew he was sad, so, probably just angry, so...
That was kind of funny, though. I saw it on news, you know? He said, you're watching, I think.
Okay, thanks, chief. Any questions? Anybody have questions for the chief?
No.
Or anything else? Okay. Building ready?
Nothing.
Streets, Rick?
Uh, yeah, just all this weather.
Yeah. Lights? Nothing.
Finance? James, do you recall about that one light? From my house in front of Mars here with the recovery book on?
Did you bring me down?
I'll get it for you.
Never on the phone.
I need the phone.
I can dial some of them on the phone.
Finance?
Uh, no.
Rick, no, sanitation, Mary Jane?
That's it.
Okay. I do have something for you, I'll talk to you about later.
Okay.
And, uh, planning, we have anything there, EPA? No. What's this resolution order, annual appropriation orders?
Annual appropriation orders, I've printed that last month and gave everybody. I have to find that.
Okay.
If it is 40...
Get that copy out. I don't have it.
Oh, my God. Oh, you already did it.
Hold on.
Which one is it?
Your...
Who's the proving resident, you know, since officer, or, uh, you...
Wait, do you have a record?
Which clerk?
Back to support on you.
How's it going on you?
He wants to...
I don't think I have anything. I got everything else. Which one we did over here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Close the numbers, Jim?
No, it's just, it, it was all printed out just like your, uh, normal, um, reports every month, and then I have to put it in a different form that you have to sign.
I don't have that.
No, it, it was just printed out like your normal...
Numbers for...
You don't have it because it's just big.
Oh, I don't have that. You're right.
And then every year, you have to sign as printed in council.
Yeah.
So...
Well, I don't have it.
Appropriations, is that what you said?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept approchi, appropriation ordinance 2011-03.
Say. Flip a coin.
Go, baby. Do you have a second?
Done that.
Go, go.
Whoever she puts on there.
Uh, Rick and Michael?
Yes.
Dean David?
Yes.
Jay Bartle?
Yes.
Mary Jane Tomlin?
Yes.
Yes.
Hot in here?
Yes, it is hot in here. Shouldn't, man, I shouldn't have cut off T-shirt. Okay. Is that it then, on that?
Yeah.
Hold, business insurance loss prevention.
What's that about?
That I gave you last night?
Yeah. I have a response, man.
How did you get it, so she wasn't here?
Yeah.
Then you weren't here.
Continue. I know, I know, I know, I mean. That's a joke. She got married. She wants to be your wife.
That used to be reviewed, somebody else.
Okay, okay, I...
I think I'm a little guilty on that one.
It might be a box.
Just clean it out.
Did you? It's in the trash.
I'm sorry, I think that was my fault.
Okay, we're going to take care of that. Okay. Next meeting is March 7th, 2011, 7:00.
6:30?
That's what it means. Be a public hearing at 6:30, regular meeting at 7 o'clock. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, Lou.
Say.
Hold on.
Mary Jane, yes, Jay Bartle.
Yes.
Dean David?
Yes.
Rick and Michael?
Yes.
What, a boy or a girl? Thank you very much.
I mean, if I could just something real quick.
Yeah, absolutely.
When you're, when you're talking about doing these surveys, I, I may write and take the time to explain to your community what, what they're really for, a little bit more about the CNG.
Yeah.[1567.62]
Because a lot of people don't understand that I have some, like, solid number in the paper last week and, like, coloring off, I see they're coloring all these dollars for this. So sometimes, we do a report job, and I'm not saying New Paris does, but we do a report job of telling people exactly why we need their income information. Also, talk about, you're talking about being in competition with other communities and county offices and a lot of it is fluffy stuff that can make a difference in, in going forward. And we have an economic development program now. You guys are taking this approach to make your streets more drivable. You're talking about your existing businesses and how does social court here is an existing business. Look at the number of businesses you have, the types of businesses you have. Focus on walkable streets, walkable communities that will, in many different other areas that you can use that same information for. If you, if you talk about being a walkable community, it will bump you up.
And we have a lot of that in the springtime when campers start coming in.
Yep.
They're walking throughout this town. They're going to the area businesses, but, you know, they're on foot. They, and that's just the way it is and it, that's what we're doing.
Also look at complete streets. The complete streets program, if, so, you can get more funding if you just put a bike, bicycle lane in, whether you use it or not, if you just pay it for the road. There's things like that. So if you look at the complete streets program in the walkable communities, set yourself apart with that because you've already done this other stuff now. You're tying yourself to the economic development program and marketing community and put this amount of investment in and look at it in terms of what the future can bring versus what you have to get done with the condition of the streets.
We talked about, talked about that when we was thrown into wells up there, putting a bicycle path in there. Well, but what happened to it, but it's...
I think you better go to the Chamber of Commerce, so, what are your thoughts now after meeting with them and taking a look at the town, what do you think we need to do?
First, get yourself on the map. You need to do a better job than all of us do. I'm not just saying New Paris, all of us do. Need to talk, talk more about who we are to the rest of Crowe County. We get caught up sometimes wanting to put something on seventy-five or we want to mail it to all over Indiana to get different people to come in. We have, we have community people in Crowe County that go outside the county to spend money because we don't know there's a frontier patch. We don't know there's snow too, you know. We, my family lives in the Southern portion of the county. We go everywhere but Crowe County and that's just because you don't, we don't know what we're that. So, in talking with the chamber, some of the things I expressed to them was that work to get the information about New Paris out to the rest of Crowe County. Go to the Westell and drop off your flyers to Sausage Jacks and to the other folks to tell them that you have the snow too. The mineral thing here is just amazing, the history on the mineral deposits are just, I'm not exactly sure what it was. I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. That's, that's pretty amazing. Um, I keep going back.
Any line?
Yeah. It's just the, 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 the mineral springs.
Talking about the old hotel on the street, basically, the bottle, they spell it ten thousand gallon a day and shipping all over, seater drinks.
But, um, many of those things, you know, we just, we need to tell more of our, our community what we have. We have people that live right here that don't know everything about New Paris. So, in talking with the chamber and understanding some of the things that they're, they're moving forward on in regards to marketing New Paris and things that are here as well as the existing businesses, is I've just, I've been telling all the chambers that I have and you're looking in front of, to channel your efforts into small business development, networking and leadership. If you can target those three areas, you'll be successful and everything you need to get done, we've done. Sometimes we get these brainwaves ideas.
You don't know New Paris.
Well, it comes from...
Who's trying to change that?
You guys are here in a leadership role and who next? Who's, who's gonna be sitting here next? It doesn't have to be somebody retired. It can be somebody straight out of high school. I mean, you really need to look at the leadership and whether it's naming a street after a kid that's here that's successful in something or another, have some buy-in to your community long-term. And grow the, grow the leadership in New Paris. I'm trying to get a leadership Crowe County that developed so that there's a county-wide leadership program. These communities really need to be able on that. Just focus on networking, you know, make sure somebody is, um, I don't know if you guys are involved or plan to be at the Crowe County Chamber of Commerce Business Expo. I know that they reached out to the chamber, President of New Paris Chamber and said, hey, we'll give your, your members a booze for our members' price, but we'll also give you twenty-five dollars back for every one of your members that will come to the business expo. In economic development, what I plan to do is tell everybody in our borough, we have a business expo going on in March. So if you can get as many as your businesses there, don't look at it as a competitive thing between chambers. Look at it as an opportunity, get your, your businesses, small and whatever, to that business expo because we're gonna promote the daylights out of it because it's county-wide business expo. And whatever you guys do to invite, make sure I know about it, the, the, the public hearing thing that you're talking about, let me know what that is. I can, you know, I can help you, you can refer to our website and the county's website and might be able to channel something through there. Just make sure I know what you're doing, from the smallest thing to the most traversed.
Okay.
But anyway, I want to just throw out there, focus on, um, walkable communities. Look at the complete streets program, if you're familiar with the complete streets program is, but look at that, see how you can tie that into your applications and what you're doing. Just like give you more money and it also sets you apart from the competition.
Good, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good day, everybody.
Thank you. Nice to meet you. Again.
You say you're trying to start a new leadership in Crowe County. If you can have a survey or pay, you can fill out what their ideas are or anything about business or community or...
Um, I will send you what I have. Actually, I'm building a place on my website that has all those resources. You see, you can leave it. You have time. Wait a second. Well, the information on the leadership program, you are the first one that's talked about the honor program. My daughter's in the honor program, Madison, my soul, and, uh...
I do good things.
Well, they, we have this other stuff that we, we really have, these organizations don't hear a real job and say, we need to there.
Hey, I need your help.
Um, they all write it in for you and, yeah, it's amazing. So, it's been a great help, it's, you know, all of us, they get a little...
I use them a lot.
That's why we're on it, I do that.
Yeah, I want to see what, because of people, how they, we can get them involved in this. I use them, when I was a kid, we had a kids' deck and high school, um, kids would be appointed.